Good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Town Council to order. If you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity for people to get here. Do I have to make a cellphone announcement? Thank you for coming. We did the Pledge of Allegiance. There are no announcements. Are there announcements? Comments from the press and public? I don't see any. We're going by an agenda that we put out yesterday. New business, the town of Merrimack responds to COVID-19 submitted by Town Manager Eileen Cabanel to present us with information on what's going on, what's happening, where we're going, and ask us a couple of questions, I guess.
Okay, so we have been racing around like chickens with our heads cut off trying to put together documents and plans and that kind of thing for the past probably three weeks and really picked it up this week. And everybody's working really well together. The police and fire departments are, you know, being very helpful in helping us through these kinds of things. And we are also, all the departments have been contributing to this. So I think Paul has reported to you before that we, this past Monday was our third task force meeting, and we had members of the police department, the fire department, Public Works, MVD was there this past time, and Barbara Healy was there, Nancy was on the phone, Tom was there. So we're, and we've invited the school district. So far, they've only come to one meeting. So as a result of the various things, this is what we, again, I apologize that you haven't seen any of this. This is all new to you, and it might seem a bit choppy, but if you'll just kind of bear with me, there's just a lot of information that we want to get out. So.
It'll be on in a minute.
Okay, so the first thing is a statement. Do we have copies of that statement?
Yes, it's in their packet, and it's in here.
Do they have a packet?
Yes, they all have their own.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you. Okay. So while, the first thing was, while we were doing this, we wanted to have kind of an overall message from the Town Council to the townspeople. And Nancy very graciously put together some thoughts on that, and I thought she did a really nice job. And I just wanted you to take a look at that and see if that is okay with you.
Yeah, I can read it if you want.
Yeah.
So the statement, as it's printed, says, "In light of our national and state emergencies, elected officials and all levels of employees for the town of Merrimack wish to communicate our continued commitment to the health and safety of our citizens. Each town department has reviewed their mission and have determined to find how any altered procedures may be needed as a result of these continuing challenges. We believe it is imperative to continue to communicate the status of our town services so each citizen will be knowledgeable and comfortable that all critical services will be maintained. We ask that our citizens understand that decisions made regarding services will be made based upon health and safety priorities. Town Hall will be closed to the public, and staff will be working remotely as necessary. Most of the services are available online, and town business will continue to be conducted as much as possible. During these unprecedented times, we must all work together with patience, kindness, and tolerance to meet the needs of our community." One of the things I noted when I read through this originally was the comment about working remotely. And I don't think that, at least immediately, the staff is planning to be working remotely.
No, we do not. We are actually, as it stands right now, things change all the time, but as it stands right now, it is our intention, if you approve it, that we would close some of our facilities, including Town Hall, to the public while the employees are here. You know, the motor vehicle permit staff can get all their things done online, and there are various things that need, that can still continue to go on. So it's my intention to keep the staff that are well here and working.
Okay. Do we need to adopt this mission statement, or?
Not after Sarah.
Okay. I mean, that's certainly our intent. Does anybody else have any other thoughts or suggestions?
We think it's a really good job. Right?
Absolutely.
My intention, when I wrote it, and I thought you were gonna, I was not happy with it, but thank you.
I like it.
We're gonna be putting this on the website?
Yes.
As an introduction, so that anything that you want to add to it would follow this.
Yes.
Is that, okay.
So just, so I think it would be nice to leave out the, and staff will be working remotely because at least until needed, they'll be available and certainly there to answer phones and stuff like that.
Yes.
And preferably, people will communicate via phone or email, certainly before coming down to Town Hall, because we're gonna talk soon about how that's gonna work.
Yes. We will do that.
Tom, Barbara.
Barbara.
Yeah, no, I agree with Tom's comment because actually, when the staff work remotely, it should be rather invisible to the public. They're still getting their services. So I think, I agree, that can be taken out.
Okay, so we're going to be asking you to enact a emergency ordinance, which is just kind of a technicality, and the umbrella under which the closing of the town facilities for, or town business, town, places of, town facilities, I'm so sorry. It's been a tough day. So what we're gonna, what we're doing is, we wanted to have an ordinance because that is available to you in order to do so. So it's under Section 5.5 of the Merrimack Charter, which we have a copy of there in your packet, gives you the authority to declare an emergency. And we thought that it would be good to do so, just so that it kind of falls in line with what we're gonna be asking you for in terms of Town Hall and various facilities being closed to the public.
So the President's declared an emergency, our Governor's declared an emergency, and we're talking about declaring an emergency to just open up whatever is necessary for us to be able to react in.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to go through this ordinance?
No.
Peter.
A question. How does this apply to our corporations in town, like Budweiser and Fidelity and so forth?
It doesn't apply to them at all because we can't, we have no jurisdiction over them.
So, and then, I think the intent here is just to control the town services aspect of the facilities and things like that. So because we haven't seen this before, we're gonna go through each section. You have one up there. Do you want to talk to it directly, or do you want me to read it, or?
Okay, so if you, you go to the, go to the 5.5, Town Charter.
The next page, yeah.
So what it says is that legal subject matter notwithstanding other provisions of this charter, to meet the public emergency affecting life, health, property, and the public peace or the public peace, the council may adopt one or more emergency ordinances, but such ordinances may not levy taxes, grant, renew, or extend a franchise, regulate the rate charged by a public utility for its services, or authorize the borrowing of money, except for provided in Chapter 8-4P of this charter. So the emergency ordinance needs to be introduced in a form of ma, manner, as prescribed by ordinances generally, and it needs to state the reason for the emergency and what it encompasses.
Okay.
So this is an example, this is what we asked Carrie Anne to write this ordinance for you.
Okay, and because we're being asked to work on this, to consider this tonight, I want to go through each of these sections independently and clearly. So the town of Merrimack, under the enacting clause, town of Merrimack ordains that effectively, effective immediately upon adoption of this ordinance, town facilities will be closed to the public in order to prevent slash reduce the spread of COVID-19, and to comply with the CDC guidelines that gatherings be limited to 10 people or less. And be feasible and practical accommodations will be made to allow the public online access to town resources and to transact town business as may be determined by the Town Council and the Town Manager. My understanding from that is that we are going to work on a case-by-case basis with any individual that feels they need to come to Town Hall, and that they need to contact us in advance by phone or email before they do so. Bill.
I guess the immediate question I have, and I emailed this to Eileen and Paul earlier is regarding the transfer station. People have to be able to, well, the way that I read this, effective immediately, town facilities will be closed. Transfer station is a town facility.
Okay, you're welcome to change the words any way you want, all right? So we're trying our best to put this all together in a fashion. There's a lot of paper here, and we're trying to get it together. So if you want to change anything, feel free to please change it.
I would suggest that we think, consider adopting this as necessary, and then amending specific pieces to, to allow the transfer station to still be open, or something like that, if you're concerned about facilities. Because I, there's also a question about whether the parks are closed, because they're town facilities.
Correct.
And I'm not convinced that parks need to be closed. But Parks and Rec needs to cancel their events, and the function hall needs to be closed, and things that would gather 10 people or more. So I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot of overlap in those areas.
We have the word designated, town facilities? Because at some point, we are gonna designate by department what their changes are, and it might be open or closed. Would that help?
So the town, the town will designate which facility, which facilities?
Or so, she would just say the designated town facilities will be closed to the public. And at some point, we come up with a list of designated facilities.
At some point, we're going to have to have a summary of each department.
You need your Michael, please, thank you.
The fire department, the police department, Parks and Rec, they all have their very specific modifications. So, and I'm assuming that that information will be presented sequentially. And so if we say designated, then it will be under their section, designated as open or closed.
Barbara, thank you.
I agree with Nancy, and I would get even a little bit more specific than that. I would say facilities and operations, because not every operation is in one building. It's all over the place. So designated, designated town facilities and operations.
Designated town facilities and operation?
No, I would, I would suggest the town will designate, because you're writing, ordains effective immediately upon adoption, town is going, it's, it's a proactive piece. So you have to put, I forget the, the type of, you know, will in front of designates in order to identify which facilities are going to be.
Of course, we can also wordsmith this, of course.
You're absolutely correct, and I appreciate that. I don't want to do that, because I, I don't want to wordsmith this.
Can we just put town buildings and operations will be closed to the public?
I think it brings me back to Nancy's way of doing it, that upon adoption of this ordinance, the designated towns' facilities and operations will be closed to public. And if we're gonna delineate the list.
It'll be clear.
Yeah, then it'll, then it'll be clear at that point. That's what I was.
I'm okay with that.
I think, I'm sorry, I think we need to be cautious. Sometimes we want to make so things so clear, we make it verbose and not clear. So we should try to get, but as simple and direct as possible, and let's err on the side of simplicity. That's all.
None of that now. Okay, I'm all right with that. So we'll go on to the next, pardon?
Have you changed it?
We've changed it to designated town facilities.
And operations.
And operations.
Going on to the declaration of purpose. The Merrimack Town Council finds that an emergency exists as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and that this pandemic affects the life, health, and safety of the public, necessitating this ordinance.
Perfect.
The authority, Section 5-5 of the Merrimack Charter and RSA 41:11-A concerning management of town property, which Eileen just went through the gist of that. Administration, this ordinance shall be administered by the Town Council and by the Town Manager and/or her designee. And if she gets sick by, it would be her designee, right. So, and the effective date would be, this ordinance shall become effective on passage pursuant to Section 5-5 of the Merrimack Charter. This emergency ordinance shall automatically stand repealed on the 61st day following the date of adoption. This emergency ordinance may be reenacted at that time if deemed necessary by the Town Council.
Just curiosity, why did we, why did we do the 61st?
Because that, that's what the charter says, yeah.
Thank you.
So.
I guess we could repeal it in advance if we needed to.
This says the 61st day. I guess I don't want to split hairs here, but if we are getting advice from the greater authorities like FEMA or whatever, whoever you want to see, DC, and they say something in 45 days, can we lift this, or do we?
Yeah, I think we can lift it at any time, but it will repeal, it will repeal automatically after 61 days unless we renew it.
No, no problem.
61 days is May 18th, just for people, people's knowledge.
So does anybody have any other questions or comments on this, as presented or as discussed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Town Council enact emergency ordinance number one as amended.
Any other comment? Call in a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0.
What we wanted to do is, so you have in front of you a document that says, what does it say at the top of it, Paul?
They don't have any.
All we have is your action items list.
All right. What does it say at the top of it?
We will have it in front of us.
For me, town facilities, this is the town of Merrimack one.
What does it say at the top of it?
Town facilities closed at public hearing Thursday.
Okay, so this, this, so why don't you give it to them, and they can see it while, while we're doing it? So we, we basically, and I should say Sharon did most of the work on this. She put together a protocol for each of the town departments there that we could put up on the, on the website. And so people could know what to do and who to contact, and there's hyperlinks and that kind of thing to, to reach each particular department for each particular function that they do. So we're going to be giving that out, but what I thought I would do is kind of go through the highlights of it without giving the, without giving all the email na, you know, addresses and things like that. So these are kind of the, the things that, the overall things that people should know. And I'm gonna go through these fairly quickly, because some of the things, I'm hoping that people won't be coming here for burn permits and for, you know, things that aren't of an emergency nature, even though we've covered all of those. So for emergency services in the fire EMS department, they will largely proceed normally with social distancing and other health and safety protocols utilized as much as possible. Dispatchers will screen callers to assist in identifying those that could be impacted by COVID-19. Additional precautions will be made by responders to protect their health through additional protective gear. Additional post-response cleaning and disinfection protocols are now in place. So these are the changes to their non-emergency interactions, and they're, those are things that are spelled out in your, in your reports that you have there. So they're not going to be doing any more fire prevention, public education, tours, visits, car seat inspections, the overhead doors and outside doors of, other than the main front door, will be closed and locked at all times. Station visitors will be restricted to the lobby to the extent possible while maintaining vital operations. Burn permits will be handled, hopefully not at all, via signup sheet in the Station 1 and 2 lobbies. Permits can also be obtained online as well. So they have set up a phone outside of, in the lobby area for people to call from behind the locked portion, and they can talk to people. Visitors wishing to speak to the on-duty calls will be, will ring the doorbell, and on-duty personnel can then call the lobby phone or speak to the person to minimize face-to-face contact. In Station 2, which is the south station, we'll keep the door, inside lobby door locked, and the office window closed most of the way, and the personnel will answer citizens' questions and needs from a safe distance. Again, emergency services for the police department. Patrols and emergency responses will largely proceed normally with social distancing protocols utilized as much as possible. The changes to the non-emergency public interactions, which, which means, you know, entering the police station, live scan fingerprinting for members will not be available. Non-emergency complaints will be handled over the phone, and the department will continue to, to conduct house checks, but will only take requests over the phone. Yes?
I guess it leads me to a question of, and I, when we say non-emergency complaints, I come home and I find my home burglarized. That's a past tense crime. It's not an emergency, but will there be a response to my home?
Yes, there will.
Okay.
That's an emergency.
Just curious about the levels and stuff.
Yeah, no, it's important to know, yeah.
And I think people.
Maybe we should put something together that kind of, yeah.
And that's all, again, you know, just, I, thank you.
Yeah. So citizens are encouraged not to visit the police department lobby unless it's absolutely necessary, and any request will be handled by, by the phone in the lobby. Reports, which I assume are accident reports and criminal reports, will temporarily stop. So if you need one, you can call the police department and, and request the information for pickup. So day-to-day operations, town clerk. I'm not gonna go through all of these things because it's very long, but I wanted to talk about those things that people will be particularly interested in. So registration of newly acquired vehicles. By order of the Governor, 20-day temporary plates issued after March 1st, 2020 will be valid until April 30th of 2020. So that's one of the things that people have to come into the office for, is to register a new car. So extending the, the plates until April 30th gives people, gives us some time so that those people don't need to come in to Town Hall, which I thought was a good thing for them to do. And so the staff is working to establish a process for those who don't have temporary, or qualify for temporary plates, which are basically people who have transactions selling a car between private parties, and they don't have temporary plates. So renewal of car registration, registrations, please, please use the online service through the, the website portal, via mail, checks and money orders only, via the Dropbox. There's a Dropbox right outside of Town Hall. Again, check or money order only. Yes?
I guess only because it's been affecting me at work a lot, but I see checks in, in mail. When the clerks answer the, have the mail, I hope they're gonna wear protective because people licking their envelopes and so forth. Has that already been thought about?
No. It has. Oh, they work, they've been wearing gloves for the past couple of days.
That's all. These things run through your head as you talk.
Oh, I know. Every time you think about one thing, you think about five other things, right? So vital records, tax and sewer payments, again, please go through the website, tax and sewer payments, please, again, through the website. Dog licensing, same thing, online. Drop a check off at the, at the drop-off box out here. Same thing with boat licenses. Voter registrations, you need to contact the town clerk by phone or email. Absentee ballots for town meeting. To request an absentee ballot can be made via mail, fax, or email, written or scanned request with signature required. An absentee ballot request form can be found in the elections and voting pages of the town clerk's website, and that's the website. Day-to-day operations assessing, same thing. Get most of it through the website. Fire and code enforcement. Inspections will, this is the Building and Health Division. Inspection will be limited to essential inspections and complaint follow-up. Contact the fire, fire marshal for these appointments. Home inspections, again, if it's not critical for you to do it, please, you know, keep in mind that we need to use our common sense as far as the services that we need. Building and home inspections, as long as the construction proceeds, inspections will either continue either virtually or in person, and contact the building division staff by phone or email. They'll all be in. Community developments, to the, community development. To file land or land use board submissions or to review property files, site plans or subdivision plans, contact the staff via email or, or phone to arrange. No contact protocols will be in place for the application submissions, and review of property files will be limited to digital files only. There's an email address for the planning and zoning that you see on your, in your form, and that is something that will be up on the website in this thing. Yeah.
If meetings all canceled, Planning Board, Zoning Board, I'm curious, maybe Tom can answer this as our rep or Bill, but how do these folks end up moving forward with their processes for whatever work they're doing?
I don't think we know yet.
They'll have to work with Tim. They're gonna, they're gonna have to work with Tim and see what they can do. If, if the meetings are canceled, they are canceled, as opposed to the one a month that the planning boards require to do, or?
Right now, that has, the one a month for the planning board has not been eased. They still have to do it. But Tim is looking for later in April, and he's consolidating the two meetings into one meeting later in the month of April right now. And as you'll see, we are also looking at a couple of options for virtual meetings. So, but right now, the mandate for planning boards to meet once a month So, uh, but right now, the mandate for planning boards to meet once a month has not been lifted by the governor. I believe that if this crisis continues, the pandemic, sorry, not crisis, pandemic continues, um, that will be something that the governor will be enacting.
Have to address, yeah.
Yep. We should keep in mind at the same time that the state has allowed a difference in the 91A, which is allowing us to have basically conferencing meetings, that we can literally meet via phone. And the only requirement, my understanding is, that one member has to be somewhere so that the citizens can come and ask the question during that meeting via that one, uh, member being available. So, that's something we should be looking at, I'm sure it's not, I think it was directed towards selectmen and town council, but I'm sure it would be applicable to the other boards as well.
Yep.
So, so you can still do it, it's just a modified plan.
Which we could do, I think.
Yeah, and, and-
So, this is all somewhat in flux, but, but at the moment, we believe this is our best bet.
Yes. So, um, cable media access, um, they normally worked various hours depending on whether they were working in the evening or not, now they'll be there from 8:30 to 4:30. There won't be any public use of the community, community studio and no evening hours unless there's a meeting, um, and the people can contact the media staff by, um, phone or email.
Uh, question, Eileen, are we gonna use cable media and put out a public service message?
Yes, I'm gonna get to that.
Maybe from police and fire and some-
I'm gonna get to that.
Yep.
I'm gonna get to that, all right. Yes. Uh, did I go back to the other one?
Uh, that's media.
Okay, that's media. Um, so Public Works, Public Works is committed to continuing to provide normal services to the residents, um, and unless there's, there's no reason for them to not do the things that they normally do. Uh, so, that's, if anybody needs burial per- why, call me.
On the other hand, we're still asking people not to go to the Public Works building-
Right, that's right.
Or the wastewater, but to call and, and do everything you can by phone or email.
Yes. Welfare, um, the, they're currently developing and providing alternative means of handling applications and processes through electronically, by mail or phone whenever possible and people should, can contact Pat, she's still in, will be in the office to speak on, by phone or email. Uh, the transfer station will remain open for trash and recycling operations. The swap shop is closed right indefinitely for, right, already, um, and people should contact the transfer station with questions as where to, uh, about where to dispose of items that aren't just regular trash, like construction debris and stuff. Parks and recreation programs, same thing, um, the function hall will be closed and all the rentals through the, through April 6th have been canceled. Um, we're still looking to promote our May to September programs with using online registrations, depending on how that all goes. The Easter, um, egg hunt scheduled for April 4th unfortunately is canceled. Um, the town athletic fields are closed until further notice. Is that true?
Uh, we-
We're gonna get to that in a minute.
We're gonna get to that.
The library is closed, so, um, they will reassess the closures if something should happen after April 3rd. They still have public wifi and will remain on during the closure. All programs are canc- canceled.
Is, is the library on this list? I don't think it is.
Is it what?
The library on this list that we have for the website?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I'm just missing it then.
No, it's not it.
I don't think it is. It's not in here.
Okay, we'll make sure we put it on there.
And all we have to do is even, um, provide a link to go to their page where they has, have all the specifics listed.
Yes, yes, okay, good idea, okay.
And the other catch is, remember we were going to mention if the offices were open or closed, this is where we should put it. For example, community development, offices closed to public. Now, when you get to DPW, obviously, offices closed, but operations open, right? So, but that's where you would designate open or closed office.
We can do that on that report, we can mod- We can modify the document that you have there, that's gonna be, go up and we'll make sure we do that with each department.
Right.
That's, that makes it much clearer.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, um, this is, so now that we've kind of gotten through the whole issue having to do with, um, the various facilities and buildings in the town, we're gonna, um, talk about public meetings, or you should. Uh, the planning board will meet only once a month as stated, um, and minimum required by statute. Uh, cor- minimum quorums will be present to reduce exposure risks. Conservation and commission and zoning board meetings are indefinitely postponed. Other boards and commission meetings are canceled or indefinitely postponed and town council future meetings are to be determined. And we are currently looking into video conferencing. So, um, this, I think this is a very important thing that we wanted to make sure that we, um, included here, um, which is outreach to the elderly and at-risk, um, residents. The, as you know, the police and fire department are very connected to the community and to the elderly and is, at-risk, um, residents already. They trust them, they, um, you know, they interact with them and they are the ones that are most at risk during this period of time, so we really wanted to kind of put something together that was, um, that kind of embraced them in our, you know, in our town, um, you know, um, our rela- their relationship with the town and we wanted to kind of keep them, make sure that we're thinking about them and we want to make sure that they're safe and, um, taken care of. So, um, we, there's a state hotline, which is, uh, 211. Uh, there's a service link, hot, uh, line, 866-634-9412. What is that specifically for?
Same thing.
Same thing. Services, yeah. So, um, we checked into the Meals on Wheels, spoke to the program director and she indicated the program is active and taking new clients or refur- referrals. Um, available, it, the, um, Meals on Wheels are available to senior citizens or who are homebound due to illness or disability. For seniors 60-plus, there is no income requirement. Goal to get to each senior, two weeks of frozen meals, meal delivery to continue as long as they are able to, able or told to stop by the state. Um, and they're saying that they need volunteers, so.
Enhance sanitizer.
Enhance sanitizer. Nope. So, um, the, uh, all the Merrimack Senior Citizens Club meetings have been suspended until further notice at the John O'Leary Center. Um, all adult community center activities are suspended. Um, the Nashua Transit is still fo- fully operational for, um, para-transit bus services, Harbor Homes, mobile crisis response for behavioral crisis, which it's important for people to understand that there are, there are people out there, good caring people that can, that you can talk to if you're stressed or you're, um, you know, feeling alone or alarmed or anything like that. Mental health seems to, or behavioral health seems to, uh, take a backseat at these, these times when people are the most stressed, so just wanna make sure that people don't feel, um, that they shouldn't call for, um, for help. Uh, food pantries, both St. James and St. John Newman churches are staying open, um, and grocery stores and pharmacies, um, may be open for delivery and available, although my food delivery was canceled that I ordered on Saturday from Hannaford, they're no longer should, delivering. I mean, they're no longer doing the online service. Thank you, appreciate it, Hannaford. Cheers. So, um, the, the Merrimack Police Department has their good morning call to program, um, to the elderly and homebound and they will continue to contact them and they should, um, call the Merrimack PD if they would like to get on that list of, you know, they call them, "Good morning, how are you doing? Um, is there anything, you know, are you, you safe today? Is there, you have any problems today?" Uh, the police department is also in direct contact with the president of the Senior Citizens Club, who has 230 seniors in town, uh, who belong and will act as the liaison for getting information out to all of them. She will also, the, um, the president will also contact Captain Talton if she knows if, of someone in need. We have identified a pers- point person in each of the adult communities where large populations of seniors reside. Information will be funneled through them and they will in turn, um, contact us with persons identified as needing assistance. Um, the police officers and fire officer, fire department and EMS officers will continue to be visible in the seniors complexes to answer questions and check on residents. Um, for, uh, again, this is not necessarily for elderly or, um, at-risk residents, for everyone. Um, Xfinity, wifi hotspots are available for, to anyone for free, including non-subscribe- subscribers. The reason why we're calling out Xfinity here is because they're our local cable provider and the other one, Verizon, Fairpoint, is not offering any free services, so that's why we're calling out Xfinity. Um, they're pausing, um, internet data plans for 60 days, giving all customers unlimited data for no additional charge. Internet, um, essentials, free service to new com- um, customers for 60 days. So, they can contact, um, Xfinity at this number and we'll put it up on the website. Um, their website is www.xfinity.com/wifi and, um, what, uh, people who don't have internet can sign up for 60 days for free. Uh, so, again, with the community outreach, the governor's executive orders, most recently, uh, calls to temporarily prohibit the dis- of disconnection of, and discontinuance of utility services, electric, gas, water, telephone, cable, internet, heating fuels, um, also have, um, forbidden temporary prohibition of evictions. They have temporarily prohibited evictions and for, foreclosures and access to state unemployment benefits for those individuals whose jobs are impacted by COVID-19 by, for a whole bunch of different wa- reasons. Um, we will also, um, our police and fire department personnel will be have, doing Facebook Live on Thursdays, Thursday at four will be our first one and it's called Merrimack in Motion and it basically is an exercise program, no, just kidding. Um, no, so, it's-
Right?
All right. So, what it, what it is, is, um, our police and fire will be talking to people and telling them things that they know. It's not, um, emergency messages or anything like that, it's just, uh, you know, calm place where people are talking and giving out information and possibly answering questions and that kind of thing.
With the Facebook, with the Facebook Live, um, we have a moder- a, kind of a moderator who'll be receiving the questions and feeding them to Captain Talton and Assistant Chief Duke during the Facebook Live presentation.
So, that's, not you?
That'll be fine.
All right.
So.
Now, we're on to elections.
Just one quick thing, um, 'cause I don't wanna, it sounded like they took a whack and I don't know, uh, that, um, Fairpoint, I don't think that they're able to offer that internet service unless you have a line brought to your house and all where. Xfinity has a wireless situation that if you're a customer, you can access it and apparently now they're being very kind and allowing, uh, anybody to, which is, which is nice, but, so I, I think, and maybe they're refusing, but I suspect that they, in order to get Fairpoint, you have to have a line, I believe.
Um, I, what I, what I said was, um, we haven't heard anything from them, so we only heard from Xfinity.
Okay.
So, I'm glad you clarified that though, 'cause I may have said it differently.
I may have heard it differently than what you actually said though, too, so.
On?
Yeah, before we get back to the election, if you could go back to the-
Can you turn your mic on, please?
Could you go back to the senior citizens, the-
Go back. Go ahead.
The page that had to do with the president, I think you'd be better off just mentioning the president because Robert Abramow might be a little upset, it's not a she. And I know it's trivial, but I know how people-
The president claims to be a woman, so, um-
The president of the, of the-
Senior center.
I suggest you check.
Okay, well, we'll double check.
All right.
I have a question.
Bill?
Can we, can we go back to fire just very quickly? The first responders that have to go out for BLS and ALS calls, I know it's a stupid question, but are, are we giving them face masks to be able?
You know what, that's a really good question and I'm gonna let, um, Assistant Chief Duke talk about that, 'cause we've talked about the various protocols that they might take people who may present with, um, with obvious situations.
And I know we have two, two nurses sitting here, so I certainly apologize if I talk out of line, but in talking with my wife, you know, we really should be treating all patients as if they have COVID-19, so that's why-
I'm gonna move and-
I, I think our, I wanna make sure that our first responders are, I wanna have the assurance that they're equipped to, to help out our community. And thank you for being here, A.C. Duke, appreciate it.
Oh, no problem at all. Can you just reiterate specifically what your question is? If, if it's, are we providing the appropriate protective equipment? The answer is yes.
That's, if you could expand upon that, just so that I don't want, you know, if, if somebody has to, if, if, if a first responder has to go out on a BLS or an ALS call, I would want the community to be aware of what they're potentially gonna be experiencing if they have to call the fire department to be treated by a, by a paramedic.
Sure. So, it starts with, um, the 911 call takers. They have a enhanced set of questions that they're, um, asking that will, um, kind of determine what the potential risk level is, um, based on, uh, history, symptoms, that sort of thing. If those, depending on the answers to those questions, uh, they will provide a, an update or an alert to us that, um, this patient profile fits, um, what may be considered a high-risk COVID-19 pay, or a, a person who is at high risk for, uh, having COVID-19. And then, um, we will put it, the, the state has just recently, the State Bureau of EMS has just recently, um, released, um, an emergency protocol, um, directed specifically at first responders, how we should respond, um, what personal protective equipment is recommended for certain, um, procedures and then, um, one of the things that we're doing to minimize, um, exposure is we will, um, we will send a minimum number of providers into the home or into the, the, wherever the patient may be located to kind of assess the situation, begin an assessment of the patient and then if additional providers are needed, um, they'll come in also with the appropriate level of precautions. And this does two things, uh, one, it minimizes the number of our, um, providers that are exposed and it also, um, reduces the, the rate at which we go through that personal protective equipment because it is all disposable at this point, so, um, we're trying to be, um, you know, cautious with how much of that we go through at this point.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, based on the, the state protocol, uh, how, how, how are we from in, in, I guess, uh, excuse me, from a, from a equipment standpoint, the, the temporary protective equipment, are we, are, are we positioned well? Do, does the, do we need to work with Eileen to consider, um, funding to make sure that we're able to buy this stuff for you folks? I just, I just wanna make sure you, you folks are prepared.
Can I just say one thing?
Not to overstep you, Eileen, I'm just-
Do you have a?
Yeah, thanks, yeah, you're up.
Um, I just, we're not gonna worry about, um, I've kind of told everybody, we're not gonna worry about nickels and dimes, about trying to get the equipment and things like that, I would never hold them up for that, but it's a good question and we should answer the question about what we have in stock.
Okay.
And I think the question is more about availability than our willingness to buy it.
it.
Correct. Thank you, Eileen.
Exactly, the time Andrew hit it exactly. The question isn't the funds to purchase it now, it's availability of the funds. So we have, we're in contact with Homeland Security through the state. They sent out a survey the other day requesting the levels of various types of equipment that all the communities have. We have answered that survey. We've been in contact with our standard retail suppliers and have, I guess, kind of orders pending for stuff that we feel we may, we may need. We are cautiously optimistic as to the status of our equipment at this point. We've inventoried everything, we have deployed it through our, through our vehicles, how we feel is best, and we have one centralized cache of backup equipment and we are keeping a running inventory of what we have, what we're using, and we're able to, over the course of the coming days and weeks, we'll be able to identify, based on that, the use rate. So we'll be able to see, you know, obviously it's, it's very fluid and changing every day, but, you know, we should be able to predict our, our use rate.
Okay, and if I could follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
We're, we're training, we're training our first responders. Obviously, the training's going to be very fluid as, as stuff gets sent down from CDC, from New Hampshire, EMS, that kind of thing. So the education piece, I imagine, is going to be ongoing for, for our providers?
Yes, we're ensuring that any, any guidelines or recommendations from Bureau of EMS or Public Health or Health and Human Services, that sort of thing, is, is all being passed down as quickly as, as email allows, so that everybody has access to the most up-to-date information. And then we are, we're taking the information and where necessary, we're turning, say for example, Health and Human Services bulletin, we're turning that into an operational, an internal operational bulletin, so they're actually in effect seeing it twice. They're seeing it as in their email and then they're receiving it as an official internal communication.
Okay, I just, now that New Hampshire, we're up to, we're up to 39 confirmed cases to have been hospitalized, it's not isolated to travel. It's now what they call community-oriented now. I really wouldn't ask Eileen to encourage the, you know, the guys that are going to be out there doing it to really treat each patient as a COVID-19 patient. I think we really should, should be insisting on that. It's not my call, but I just, I think we should be going in that direction. One man's opinion.
Peter?
Peter?
Chief, just curious, is, so if potentially, if they, if you get a report of somebody fever, hard time breathing and everything, could potentially that person, when they, your folks enter the house, be wearing their biohazard suits? Is that, would it go that far? I'm just curious.
So currently, the recommendation for a patient of that nature would be eye protection, respiratory protection in the form of either surgical mask or N95, gloves, obviously, and then what we consider splash protection. So either like an apron or one of the things, we were, we were short on gowns, so we have substituted the Tyvek suits, which I guess, you know, might be what you're talking about, but it's, it's basically just a disposable coverall type of suit that provides splash protection and all of.
Yeah, I know back when the avian flu came around and SARS, I know law enforcement, we were all equipped and Captain Talton might answer that, if they still have those, we had a, all of us had issued a biohazard suit, boots, the whole outfit, gun belt and everything. Are those still around, Cap?
We still have those.
Just a clarifying question, the, the N95 mask, is that, is that the one that's used for when treating patients with tuberculosis?
It's all the finest.
I'm not 100% sure of the answer to that specifically.
I'll defer to my nurses over, my nurse colleagues here.
It's the.
The thickness that.
It's the standard that's been identified by, by CDC and Bureau of EMS and that's, that's what we have.
That carpenters use it for dust and stuff.
Sure.
So they're finding that they're able to get some of those masks, which you're right, that's the approved, coming from industrial companies going to healthcare facilities.
The New Hampshire Society of Nurse Anesthetists, full disclosure, my wife's a nurse anesthetist and they're recommending that you move from the basic surgical mask to those particular types of masks.
Those are specific.
Be very specific because of the thickness and the.
The density.
And the density to it. So that's the reason why I asked the question.
Yep, you're right.
Thank you.
Just one other thing that I, that I should mention, too, that's, that's a little different from normal. One other thing that we may be doing with a, with a, with a patient who's, you know, we believe is, is a high probability or potential, we may in fact put a surgical mask on the patient, which is kind of, it seems unorthodox, but if we can prevent the, and that's, again, a recommendation directly from CDC and Bureau of EMS, if we can prevent the transmission of, of any aerosol droplets from the patient into the atmosphere, that lessens the likelihood of contamination past that source. So that is something that people may want to be aware of. We may ask that a patient like that, you know, put a mask on themselves if they'll tolerate it.
One follow-up, it's a curiosity question, only because I've been following all the reports that I can get my hands on, I've not seen this conversation, I just think I'd throw it out there. Has there been any discussion at the state level of dedicating a hospital specifically to treat COVID-19 patients? So that they're identifying the COVID-19 patients and keeping them from the rest of, I hate to use the word segregate, but because of the, the incubation period that, that this virus has, it's, at least from where I look, it would be prudent to, from regular patients versus IDing those with COVID-19.
I can't speak directly to what their plans or intentions are.
No discussion.
I have not, I have not been notified, like I said, through anything official that anybody is currently doing that. I wouldn't want to speculate.
Fair enough, I just didn't know if, if there was a discussion, so.
Thank you. Okay. So are we good with the fire department? Nancy?
Yeah, I'm all good.
Oh, okay.
I just had a quick, not for you, thank you. And I, just to follow up, Pete, I had the same thought as you do. The police department should also have gloves and masks available to them, too.
I agree.
Would you like to ask the elements some questions?
Does the police department?
Sounds like we do, yes.
We would love to.
He can't.
Just letting Matt know his water bottle tipped over on me. He's refreshing.
I was just.
It's okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I was just.
You've got a booming voice, but you've got to hit.
Yeah, I know, right?
I wanted to make sure that the police department, if need be, have gloves and masks available as well.
We do. Yeah, absolutely. We have that, we have those supplies and we've given it to the patrol officers, so.
Excellent.
Sure, so with regard to the ambulance calls, it kind of just goes in line with the non-emergency calls we were talking about earlier. What we're doing is typically if we have an ambulance call, we'll go to it, we'll go inside, we'll offer help. The fire department, we'll, if we get there first, we'll touch base with the, the person that called. However, in the interest of trying to limit contact, if it's not necessary, non-emergency ambulance-related calls, I'm not talking about strokes and heart attacks, an overdose, anything like that, we're going to go in, it's going to be business as usual. But a lot of ambulance calls, even though we're, we respond to them to help, we may not necessarily need to go in the house, so we're not going to. But we will be staging a distance away on the off chance that a patient becomes uncooperative, combative, or for whatever reason the fire department needs us, so. We are still going, but we're staging a distance away on those particular calls, if that makes sense.
Peter?
For, for both you, Captain, and Assistant Chief Duke, just curious, since pretty much we've been, we haven't been formally locked down, but are you guys seeing fewer calls for service or more calls for service? I'd be curious, in another week or two, possibly by this April 6 deadline, see what, how the, how the statistics played out for everybody.
In regards to just calls for service in general, or?
Yeah, and, you know, are we just, are we seeing very, only, only serious calls now? Or are we only seeing?
We're still getting, I mean, as far as the PD's concerned, we're still getting people that are, that are coming into the lobby. As far as lobby calls are concerned, most of which are non-emergency, you get a lot of fraud and, and, you know, whether harassment complaint or something along those lines that we may not necessarily need to have face-to-face contact with somebody. We have a lobby phone, so what we're doing is we're communicating with these folks with the lobby phone and they're speaking with an officer in one of our interview rooms is typically how we're handling that. Trying to reduce the amount of paperwork that we're passing back and forth, so statements, instead of taking written statements, we're accepting emailed statements and things along those lines. But the calls for service in general, our dispatchers have been told that if it's not emergency-related and it's something that an officer can handle over the phone, we're calling people instead of responding to their residences and handling them. Serious complaints, you know, you'd mentioned earlier, the burglary, anything that, that results in the evidence collection or anything more, you know, along those lines, we're going to respond to those calls. So that's going to happen. We're still on patrol. It's just the, the non-emergency stuff that we can handle over the phone, that's what we're focusing on right now. And, you know, the complaints, I haven't seen a reduction in, in calls for service. But I, most of the people that we've dealt with, from my understanding, we're not getting any sort of kickback from them or any grief, or they understand why we're handling things the way we're handling them and they've been really good with it. I mean, I've seen a number of people yesterday and today filing complaints using the phone in the lobby and I haven't heard any issues.
Just a curiosity question, are you guys handling complaints about any establishments that didn't close, that should, should be closed, or anything like that?
There was, well, we had one, one establishment that supposedly was open for takeout and was going to allow their patrons to enjoy some beverages at the bar while they're waiting for the takeout order to get prepared. So I made a call to liquor enforcement. I talked to Ben Williams, actually, and Ben followed up and that was just a misunderstanding. So that was, that was fixed. So, but that was the only thing yesterday. I was kind of thinking a lot of the same lines with Bean, St. Patrick's Day, but we'd have more complaints. But no, everything, you know, as far as I know, went smoothly, so there's no issues.
Thank you.
Our restaurants, I received something from one of our restaurants in town that they're now offering beer and wine to go.
I, yeah.
State said they could.
I've heard that that's something that, that, yeah, that's being seriously considered. It's going to become something that might happen.
Barbara?
The emergency resolution was passed this afternoon and signed by the governor and published. It's on his website. But it has to be in a container, like a beer bottle or a can. In other words, something that's already sealed.
Something sealed.
Yeah, you can also buy bottles or whatever, but it can't be, yeah, a draft beer.
So Peter, your question extended to the fire department as well as to whether or not they were seeing any additional or changes in calls? Did that get entered?
Sort of mentioned, he didn't say, he said.
Yeah. Oh.
I wouldn't say that we've seen a significant increase or decrease in, in the general overall number of calls. And to echo what the captain said, the, the response from both the public and of course we see a lot of traffic through the building department, particularly for permits and questions and planned drop-off. The, the response that we've been getting has been very, very good. People have been, have been patient, have been understanding of the, the need for the changes we've made. You know, there were, there was some little, there were some logistical and technical glitches that we had to work out, but once we kind of got those things straightened out, it's just not the way we have been, everyone is accustomed to doing business, but they're, they're accepting and, and patient and, you know, the response has been, has been favorable. We appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
Can you guys thank your staffs for being on the front line?
Yep, absolutely.
We will, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Nancy?
Not to do related to these services, but to Paul and Eileen. Obviously, we have nothing to do with the school, but there are enough citizens in this town who still have a difficult time differentiating responsibilities. My only suggestion is, in that list, I would put schools and just put a link to the school department.
Okay, that's a good idea.
So if there's any confusion, you know, it's just, we want to be able to help them.
Okay, so that we make sure that we have a complete thing.
Yeah, just put schools and just put the link.
The link, okay.
And they have their website.
Good idea.
Oh, that's what this is. This is what they just went through.
That's what this is, yeah.
Could have had that before.
Eileen? Just, I don't know if you guys covered it under Parks and Rec, organized sports.
We're, we're getting to that.
Oh, okay, I thought that was, thanks.
Good question.
So are we at elections?
Okay, so, sorry, we're doing a little kibbutzing over here, kibitzing or whatever it is. So we're wondering if you will pass, will approve the document that we handed out to you about where, about the various kinds of services, because it, it designate, it gives the designation of.
This document?
No. The one that the public will get.
I thought we did that already.
Yeah, we did the.
Okay, fine. So was there, you're going to add library to this?
We're going to add a library, we're going to add the school. We're going to put in whether they're open or whether they're.
Close to the public.
Close to the public. And what else?
The schools.
I already said that.
And.
Yeah, okay. And with those things, is that, is this okay with you to?
So we need a motion to accept this?
Yes, as modified.
Moved by Nancy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill.
And my thanks for, this reflects a lot of work. Thank you.
Yep.
Sharon Marunich.
Well, thank her as well.
Thank you, Sharon. A lot of hard work. I agree, it's a great job. I'll put it to you very quickly. And the link to the school. And the link to the school, were you going to be just leaving a link to the school district website or were you going to be, if you were going to elaborate anymore, last night they had their free and reduced lunch program, they were offering up to any child because they spoke about privacy and all, and so I didn't know if you're going to be more than just a link to the website, that might be something to put in.
I think that we need to just link to their website and if people are looking for those, that kind of information, they're going to have to go search through it with the school district, because we don't want to, we don't want to lead people to a place that they aren't looking for or, you know, it's, it's really up to the school to get the, the proper information out and put it up appropriately so that people understand it, so, and it could change all the time, so, so I would recommend just linking it to the school district's SAU's website. That's okay.
With me, it doesn't matter. I didn't know if they might have an area specific that deals with the coronavirus conversation, but that works for me either way.
They do have a COVID-19 page, but they ought to be able to get to it from their front page, I would think.
Yep, most likely, I haven't looked, so.
I haven't either.
Very good.
We could add a short statement saying, for information related to free and, free food or however you want to say it, the food distribution through the school or any curriculum at-home teaching, please refer to this link. Do you think, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't want to become too cumbersome, so it's whatever does work. I was just throwing out, out his ideas if we were going to be more specific than the homepage.
Peter?
I know that we've talked about all the other town departments, but one of them, it kind of came to light to me today is building and grounds, our cleaning crews. And why it came to light was they were interviewing a doctor and they were talking about thanking the, that this doctor recognized not only his fellow doctors and nurses, but recognized the housekeeping and cleaning crews. And so that made me think, do we have enough people to help and do we have enough supplies to keep our facilities clean? Our police stations, our fire stations, everything, you know, railing, everything but, you know.
Yes, we do. So Phil and, and the John Louis are going around and washing, cleaning door handles and surfaces. The employees I know at town hall, I'm not sure if they brought them elsewhere, have basically a bucket of things that they have to, to clean their areas and to clean their computers, because we're low on hand sanitizer, so we have, so individual offices have a kit to, to keep them clean to kind of augment what, what the staff are doing.
Now, are we all set for, for those cleaning supplies and sanitary supplies? Okay, we don't have to order anything?
We are.
We are ordering everything and so right now, we're, you know, we're, we're fine now and we have things on order.
Okay, thanks.
I would like to congratulate them, too, on doing a really great job on making sure that, that we're all safe.
And it goes probably without saying, but I'm going to do it anyway, the, we're closing the town facilities to the public. their fellow employees, and if you're sick, stay home, call your doctor, don't go see them, and find out what you can do about it. But certainly, we're counting on everybody in the staff to, in order to keep maintaining town services, to manage themselves and their regions and areas. Just closing to the public is not sufficient.
Move the question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I forgot we were distracted.
That's okay.
So we have a motion by Nancy and seconded by Bill to accept the town facilities closed for the public beginning Thursday, October 19th, until further notice, document as we've just gone through with the changes and additions that we've discussed tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0.
Okay, so we, Lynn Christensen, our moderator is here to talk about the elections for April 14th. We also have some information in your packet where it comes from the state attorney general's office. I wrote at the top, from the state attorney general's office, on what his directives are having to do with elections. So we'll let...
Lynn, you want to...
Lynn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you mean?
It's been a long day. There's been a lot of thought that's gone into this decision, and we are going to postpone the election for two weeks, which we're allowed to do for any number of reasons. It used to be just whether the statute was changed last year, the year before, I can't remember which, but to allow for other reasonable reasons, and this certainly being, having declared a state of emergency, that this is certainly a reason to do that. There's a lot of prep work that goes into the elections ahead of time, so waiting for, you know, to see what happens in the next week or two, I don't think is prudent. I think we make the decision now, we're going to delay it until, or postpone it until April 24th, which is the two-week period.
24th?
April 24th.
Well, it's currently April 14th.
I'm sorry, 28th.
28th, that's a...
Thank you.
April 28th. Absentee ballots are available, well, they're not yet, but requests for them are available. If you need an absentee ballot, you go to the town website, you click on departments, you click on town clerk, and on the left-hand side, there's a series of options for things that are covered by the town clerk. One of them is elections. You click on that and go all the way down to the very, very bottom of that page, and there's a request for an absentee ballot. It's a two-page document. It states name, address, et cetera, it says why you're requesting it, and, you want to bring it up?
I have that link, believe it or not.
Okay. As far as I'm concerned, anybody that feels the need to not go to the polls for, whether they are self-isolated, whether they are at risk, whether they are elderly, whether they are not in town, whether they are disabled for whatever reason, I'm leaving it up to the individuals themselves, that if they feel they need an absentee ballot, I'm not going to police them. They're more than welcome to do that. I would suggest they print off that request and either mail it, fax it, email it to the town clerk's office, and they will be provided with an absentee ballot.
Can they drop it in Dropbox?
Yes. As long as it's signed, they can provide it there. If you can't get out and you need your neighbor to drop it off for you, that's available, any of those things. We're trying to make this as easy and as comfortable for people as we can. Absentee ballots are available right up until the day before the elections. If we end up postponing a second time, which is possible, depending upon how the situation resolves itself, we have the ability to do that, and absentee ballots, again, will be available up until the actual day or the day before the actual day we have the election. So that's all there. I'm a little cautious about some of these things. One of the other reasons that I made the decision was, a lot of our volunteers may not be comfortable because they may feel that they are at risk as well, and they may not be available to help. So there's a lot of things that went into play. I didn't make this decision in a vacuum. I've been on the phone with the secretary of state's office to make sure that my understanding of the statutes and my abilities to make decisions were correct. I've been in discussions with town legal counsel and any other people that have been on my email chain that has, have been willing to provide me with feedback. So that's where we are. I'm, questions?
Lynn, do you have any, control, you moderator for the MVD?
No.
Okay, are they continuing with their deliberative meeting?
Well, they're having a problem because they're scheduled to have their meeting on the 24th of this month in the school, and the school has told them they cannot have it. So they are right now trying to find a venue. I've also been in touch with the MVD moderator because they, he was asking about postponing and what they should do and how they will do it. I have no knowledge of what they're doing. I am the school, and I've been in touch with the school, so.
So you have made a decision to postpone the election to April 28th?
Correct.
At this point, you will make a further decision as necessary, given the circumstances.
As we follow along and get closer to that date, if it looks like things have not changed to the better and we need to postpone it again, I'll postpone it again.
Okay.
We need to keep people safe.
If I might ask, what kinds of things change due to the postponement that you, if you continued on right now, assuming it would be the 14th, you said there's a lot of work that has to be done in advance, but how much of that actually changes when you postpone it two weeks? A significant amount of work?
Well, the biggest thing that would change is getting volunteers or people to come and work at the polls.
I get that.
Monitoring and managing the absentee ballot process, that's ongoing, that requires work, and a lot of little things that come into play, so.
Yeah, it's always more complex than it seems like. I mean, the school board was discussing last night the complexity of doing things like lunches for kids.
Yep. Oh, I can't imagine doing that.
I can understand that it could be a lot more complex than it seems to me, but, so the schools are closed until the 3rd of April, and then they'll make a decision what to do.
And that's another consideration. If they're closed, will they allow us to use the schools? Will the church allow us to use the church? If they say no, it's up to you guys to find a place to do this.
That's right. Lon?
Yeah, back to the absentee ballots. If you anticipated an election on the 28th and you accept absentee ballots at a...
Through the 27th.
At a point, and then decide to postpone yet again, how do we manage the validity of those ballots that you may have already collected?
That's easy. We do that all the time. If you come in and say, well, I'm not going to be here on April 14th and the election is happening, and you put in an absentee ballot, and then your sales conference is canceled and you're in town, you come in and you vote in person. There's already a provision for that. That's one of the reasons that we do not start processing absentee ballots immediately when we open the polls, is to give those people who wanted to vote in person and now can vote in person, can come and vote in person. Same thing will happen if we postpone. We will have absentee ballots, we'll be collecting them at some point during the day when we actually have the election. We will take all of those ballots that have been collected and we will process them. If somebody's come in and voted in person already, when we go to the checklist, we say they've already voted in person, that ballot isn't processed, and it's marked as such and put in with the rest of them. So that's, the provision is already there. That's easily handled.
Go ahead.
My confusion, Lynn, is if they fill out an absentee ballot and you accept it for a 28th of April election and you postpone...
That ballot is valid for when the election is held.
Thank you.
It's valid for the annual town elections and school district elections.
Independent.
Thank you.
Regardless of what the date is.
Pete?
And this is for the council itself, is going back to the MVD deliberative session, in light of our proclamation tonight, our declaration, do they, does that, do they fall under...
No.
They're their own authority.
Yeah, well, maybe this is something that if somebody isn't watching or saying, maybe the town manager or her designee can reach out to them and say, this is what we've decided to do, FYI, and, you know, I know you can't make them, but, you know, maybe we need to let them know. It's kind of flying in the face of whatever...
We had, we had our COVID-19 task force meeting, was it Monday?
Friday.
Friday?
Friday morning.
Friday.
Right.
No, it was Monday.
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 And they were there, so Jill and Ron were there, so I will be in touch with them and find out what they're doing. And I, I'm going to assume that they're going to come on Friday when we have our next meeting, but I will contact them.
Are they using a town facility? Because I think that that proclamation covers our...
No.
No.
They don't have a town facility planned at this point. They were going to use the school for their annual meeting, and they're looking for what they can do now.
So I guess, like, you know, so they're still looking for a location.
As far as I know, yes.
As far as we know, they are.
And they can't use a town facility now under our proclamation.
Unless they work with us to get a special exception.
Okay.
Nancy had a question? I'm sorry, yes.
Well, actually, I just have a suggestion. You gave a very clear delineation on how to find the ballot, you know, write-in ballot. Might I recommend...
The request.
The request. Might I recommend that you just do a link to it?
I can, I can talk to...
Do you know what I'm saying? Whatever you're going to put on the website in terms of the elections, you can just make a statement and...
It's in their list here that...
Okay, does it have it?
That we just put the, yeah.
With the ballot?
Absentee ballots for town meeting.
And it actually has a link to where it is?
Yes.
It's right here.
Then that takes care of it.
The blue, down at the bottom.
Then that takes care of it, sorry.
It's on the bottom of the page, Nancy, that link.
Okay, but does that bring it...
But it's in here too, yeah.
Does that bring it to the page of the request form?
It does, yeah. I don't know how that...
That's all I'm saying.
It brings it to the page to request it and says the link to the form is at the bottom of the page.
Okay, perfect then. Thank you. That answers the question.
I'm on the wrong thing. Don't worry about it.
Thank you. Then that takes care of it.
Any other questions for Lynn at this point? Do you need any action from us, Lynn?
Need no action from you. It's just getting the word out. I'm going to try and, that's why I wanted to come to this meeting tonight, because I know there's a lot of people that will be watching this meeting and will get the notice that the election has been postponed. We'll put it in any venue we can. I'll be making announcements on social media and answering questions for anybody that...
And we'll be putting it on our website, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it, Eileen, is it possible that we could use an Excel alert to communicate that as well?
That would be appropriate. Yeah, any venue we can to get the word out.
Every week between now and then? I mean, just...
And like I said, that may not be a permanent postponement. We may, we have no idea, nobody has any idea...
Nobody has any idea where this is going from.
Where this is going, and there are other ramifications for delaying the elections, but nothing that I can do anything about, but you will have to be concerned with.
Yes. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
We're good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
So the next thing that we're going to talk about is allowing people to have extensions for their various exemptions for elderly, for solar, for all these various things that are due on April 15th. And so this RSA allows you to extend the date. We've had people coming in saying that they're not able to get their particular paperwork, they might not be able to get their bank statements, they might not be able to get their IRS, get in touch with the IRS to have their, you know, income verified and that kind of thing, so there have been some, quite a few people in here concerned about it today, so we wanted to make sure that we address that and that we, and the fact that the town council actually has the ability to do that within your own purview, I'm asking you if you will allow it to be extended to May 1st.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Just because some of that was said very quickly, can you tell me what you're moving?
Eileen has asked that we extend the application period as it relates to exemptions and credits from April 15th to May 1st.
To May 1st. I wanted that very clearly stated.
No, I appreciate it.
I didn't hear Eileen very well, so.
Okay.
Sorry, so...
May 1st.
Yeah, so...
So just a two-week extension?
A two-week extension to May 1st for the exemptions and credit applications for solar, elderly, disabled, and veteran will be extended from April 15th to May 1st. And may, you may need to modify that as things progress so that it's later, but we can't get too far into May because of the tax bills.
Okay. Peter?
I guess that maybe that, I was about to say, why don't we just make it a month, May 15th, but I just heard the town manager saying we can't get too far into May.
I think I'd be comfortable with May 15th.
I was actually going to suggest that only because our emergency ordinance brings us out to May 18th, so May 15th seems to be a pretty good date for people to take advantage.
Just, no, we'll work hard to get the credits and exemptions in the system so we can try to get the tax bills out, just, it might not be June 1st. It might be delayed a couple of days.
But, you know, as I said to you, you don't have to change the whole warrant because of 15 or 20 bills, so we'll work, we'll work on it and get it resolved.
We'll work our hardest to get them done.
And we'll get it resolved.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would amend my motion to make the extension for the exemptions for credits for solar, elderly, disabled, and veteran from April 15th to May 15th. Is that okay, Council Healy?
It is.
It's motions by Bill and seconded by Barbara as amended. Any other comments or questions? Anybody else have comments? No. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstaining or opposed, opposed or abstaining? Neither anyway. 7-0-0, thank you. So we'll extend that out to the 15th of May.
Okay, so here's, here's another question that we had about the ball fields, the playgrounds, and the parks, including, what? Including things like the dog park, the skate park, those kinds of things, tennis courts, Kids Cove, so I don't know if you want to, you want to make recommendations about these particular facilities, or I believe that Matt Casparius's recommendation was to close all of them, right?
Well, to definitely close the ball fields down at this time, and then if we do close the playgrounds down, all three playgrounds be shut down, and then if the parks are there, those are the ones, skate park, it should be ATV, not TV park, it should be ATV park, dog park and tennis courts, and it shouldn't be Bridget, Twin Bridget, it should be Twin Bridge. Bridge.
Personally, I was thinking we would leave playgrounds and, and things open and let people understand that it's their responsibility to take care of themselves and their families. I agree that ball fields probably should be shut down, because that would tend to have more than 10 people gathered. People that go to playgrounds or to Watson Park or something like that can, can self-isolate, if you will, in my opinion. I don't know what other people think.
Tom, I, and, and I get where you're coming from, and there's a part of me that I'm like, man, I don't wanna, I think people need to get outside, and, but I'm also thinking about Kids Cove in the spring, and my gosh, you got, there's gotta be 30, 40 kids at a time there.
And do you think parents are gonna bring their kids to a, a, a place like that, where, I mean, the, the schools are closed to keep the kids out of these environments. Is somebody gonna literally bring their child to that quote-unquote "dangerous" position?
Matt Casperius said they were all packed yesterday and today.
So I guess my, to what would lead me to, the question would be, is there a liability in it for us then? If somebody was said, you know, and I don't know how you do it, but is there a liability, you know, if we left it open, and somebody's saying, "Is anybody here cleaning the park, wiping things down?" Do we have a liability?
See, I'd have less of a problem with the fields than Kids Cove. Fields at least, I mean, not that there's an organized game, but to be able to go there and run around in a field when there's like three people in it, that has less of an issue liability-wise to me than Kids Cove where they're, but your, your question is well put. But I don't have a problem with the fields. Isn't that funny? It's just a different perspective.
Well, I mean, I don't see two or three people going to run around the fields being a problem. I, I guess I would close it to organized sports, which is what somebody mentioned earlier.
There you go.
But, but just being in a field, I have no problem with. Being at Watson Park, running around in the field, I have no problem with. But if, if we wanna say closing them to organized sports or programs like that, where you're gonna have organizations of 10 or more, which the CDC's already said they don't want. Barbara, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, Kids Cove was packed yesterday. I don't think that there was just a couple of parking places left, because it's the parents that are bringing them there. And likewise, but on the other hand, how are you gonna control it? There are no gates. There's no, nothing that's fenced off and a gate on it so that you could actually close it.
Well, I think that you can't, I think that you just have to put up a sign, "Closed," and if people continue to come-
It's at your own risk.
It's kind of at your own risk, or if the police happen to be driving by, they can tell people to disperse. But, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't regulate common sense, unfortunately.
There's actually, excuse me, there's actually, I believe, a chain, excuse me, there's a chain, I believe, up by the MYA parking lot, going down to Kids Cove, and we could put that for the, the going down there into Kids Cove, the hill going down, we could put, we can put that back across, and we could put a sign up right there that Kid Cove, you know, until further notice, Kids Cove is, is closed.
Failing?
If we're gonna put a sign up, I'd rather put a sign saying, "Because of COVID-19, use at your own risk." I'd rather, I'd rather not close it. There was somebody, I don't know where I even read it, we're so information saturated, but I read it yesterday that said, "These kids are home, get them outside, let them breathe the air, and get them active that way instead of being cooped up." And, and so by closing, I, I appreciate the concerns of liability and everything, but you had said you can't legislate or sensibilities or whatever you did say, Eileen.
Regulate.
And, uh, regulate common sense. I, it's, you know, so that's where, if we're gonna put a sign saying "closed," I'd rather put signs saying, "Here's the deal, use at your own risk."
The only thing that concerns me about that is not people getting their kids outside and playing, it's being on structures that actually they can sneeze on and that they can, you know, spread germs on. You know, it's not about running around in a field or, you know, playing a game. It's actually being on a structure. There are some, some of it is enclosed even.
There were reports that say the virus can survive on metal for two hours, and they can't make any guarantee on water or plastic.
Do we have guidance as to how other communities are handling it, playgrounds and so forth?
We don't at this point, so we're, that wasn't one of our priorities for today, but I just, you know, we, we can certainly do that. But I would think, in, in my way of thinking, those things that are, Kids Cove in particular, I would be concerned about. And even the skate park.
I've, I've changed my position, thanks to Eileen. I, I would agree, if it's the structures that we're concerned about because of residual viruses or whatever, then fair enough. But I'd like to leave everything else available to the public head, you know, hoping that they see.
So, so I guess what, what has structures? Kid, Kids Cove, the skate park, and then- Normal French, Vets Park Playground, and then the skate park.
The dog park has structures there as well.
Yeah, but-
But not like the dog.
Well, they have a double gate that they'd be touching on.
Yeah, but, yeah.
You know, I, I, it goes back to that, I think we do need to add a sign that says, you know, "COVID-19, use at your own risk" type thing.
It sounds ominous. I mean, I know it has to, but can I, can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just would hope that maybe we could do that for the structures themselves, but maybe not the whole park. So like the playground equipment, for instance, and I'm just kinda throwing ideas while I'm talking. So, you know, the Kids Cove area, that really is all structures, but the whole of Vets Park isn't playground equipment.
It's just the playground and Vets Park.
You know what I, you know what I mean? Oh, they don't have playground equipment?
They have a playground equipment. Sorry, they have playground equipment. There's, there's Vets Park itself, and then there's a section that has a playground on it.
But you see what I'm saying?
I think if you're gonna close it, close it.
Okay.
Barbara, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
There is a telephone number for the Joint Information Command. I'm sorry, the Joint Info Center. I think this is a question for them, rather than us agonizing about, "Do we or don't we, and what is the risk?" I think it's, we call them and ask them, "What's your suggestion? What are you thinking is the risk here?" That way, we're making a more informed decision than kinda guessing, I guess.
The managers group, believe it or not, this is one of the topics they did not discuss. They discussed a lot of other things, but not this one.
Interesting.
Peter?
So did we get an answer regarding organized sports in the MYA? Are they-
Technically, the ball fields are still closed into the middle of April. We're just trying to be a little bit proactive until further notice right now. So they usually don't get on the field until the middle of April.
Yeah.
You know, we're talking basketball courts and tennis courts too here, so.
So what, what if I put together something after consulting people, as, as Barbara had suggested, finding out what the communities are doing, and then doing it and letting you, you know what we're doing, with the understanding of your concerns about people's freedoms and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm split on it.
Lon, I'm sorry. Were you, were you done?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Lon, your turn. Pardon?
This is where the rubber meets the road, as they say. I had a conversation with a grandchild of mine as recent as 1:32 o'clock this afternoon. Doesn't understand granddad as such, but understands grandad. We're talking about a virus that is relatively unknown to us. We're talking about health and safety of our Merrimack citizens. We're talking about trying to avoid the community spreading type thing that apparently, you know, gets it really going. We're talking about Kids Cove, and we want to say to one group of our citizens, "You take it upon yourself to keep your kids and you safe. Oh, oh, by the way, keep the rest of the community safe, but go ahead and play at Kids Cove." I think we're losing track of what it is we're about, folks, and I think we need to be very, very careful. And I apologize to no one for feeling this way, but I couldn't apologize to myself if I hadn't expressed it. Kids Cove, I would say, and that's just the beginning of the kinds of exceptions. If you try to make, you end up having accomplished nothing. Thank you.
Okay, so can you give, give me the authority to make the decision once I've consulted, or do you wanna meet again?
I'm okay giving you the authority to make a decision, and if we don't like it, we'll adjust it at our next meeting.
If you could just update us later on what the decision was finally.
You have to.
Before it goes out, I'll call each one of you. Oh, you don't, just Eileen?
Are we good? Lon? Okay, so you're gonna check on it further and make a decision on how to best handle it? Which brings us to any other questions or comments from the board? I think. Are you done?
I just, question for the board. Are you still planning on meeting next Thursday?
Yes, we are.
Okay, just so we know.
Are we meeting in person? Are we doing teleconference?
I don't know. I think we're gonna have to make that decision between now and then.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
That if anybody doesn't feel they should meet, somebody's gonna be here, and so I intend to be here. If anybody feels like they shouldn't be here for whatever reason, we'll set up a teleconference call, because that's legitimate and we can do that. But at least one of us needs to be here. I'll volunteer to be that person at this point, unless somehow I get sick and can't, in which case Bill will be the next person to make a decision.
I will be here. No, I'll be here. Absolutely.
Maybe.
(laughing)
But as far as I'm concerned, we're still planning to meet. Any other comments or questions?
Just a, a comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Just thanks to Eileen and Paul, Captain Tarleton, AC Duke, for the presentation, the information. I, I personally feel very good that the town has done not just an adequate job, but an exceptional job of identifying the departments and putting together a plan in place, so that people in the community know exactly where to go and what to do during this particular period in time. So for everybody that had a hand in this on the town staff, I wanna thank them as well. A lot of hard work. I know we've said that, and I don't mean to be redundant, but a lot of hard work was put into this. I think we all, I don't mean to speak for everybody, but I think we all share that particular sentiment, so I certainly wanna convey my thanks.
I didn't hear any comments from the press and public, but seeing, there's no press or public here. You guys don't count, 'cause you're staff. You can make a comment if you want. So any other comments from the council? Go ahead.
The only thing I'd like to add to what Bill has already said is that the public who's watching, if you have any questions or ideas, please let us know.
Absolutely.
Either contact one of us individually or call the town manager's office. We would be grateful to receive any questions or any recommendations you may have. So please, it's your community, we're here to serve you. Help us learn what you need. So thank you.
Well said, Nancy. Thank you.
Anybody else? So I just wanna add my thanks to the staff for your work, and to the people at the Town of Merrimack bear with us. We realize this is a very unusual event. It's caught all of us somewhat by surprise. Not totally by surprise, but it certainly has changed what we were planning to be doing at any one point in time. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having a special meeting. This is a very extenuating circumstance. It's a big concern, and while, if you look around your neighborhood and whatnot, and you don't see this disease, if you look at the news and you look around the world, you're gonna see that it's spreading rather dramatically. And a virus like this grows exponentially. You'll see that several different people point out, "We're trying to quote-unquote 'flatten the curve.'" We're trying to, by doing all of this isolation and all of this shutdown, make it so that it doesn't grow exponentially, that we can stop this spread and keep it contained to where it is already. And that's a big undertaking. And some people would argue that we should be doing a lot more than we're doing now. We're asking everybody to continue to be diligent and vigilant, carefully watching yourself and your neighbors. Protect yourself, keep the, the, the separation, the social distancing, if you will, and, and make sure that you do your part to avoid spreading this disease. If you get sick, call your health professionals and get some advice, get yourself tested if necessary. They will have to make that decision, but don't just go out running around and, and talking to all your neighbors, and if you feel like you have some of the symptoms that are being reported. So we're reaching out to the Merrimack residents to bear with us. We understand it's complicated, we understand it's difficult, believe me. We're seeing it from this side, but we're, we're doing all of the precautions that we can, and we ask, we thank you for your patience as we work this out.
And we're here for you. We're here for the people of Merrimack.
Absolutely.
All the staff.
Was that anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion to adjourn by Lon, seconded by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.